Thanks, and welcome to the Wednesday, July 26, 2023, meeting of the Redmond Planning Commission. I call the meeting to order and start with a roll call. Commissioner Woodyear.
Present.
Commissioner Aparna.
Present.
Commissioner Van Nyman.
Present.
Commissioner Sheffron.
Present.
Commissioner Nueva Camina.
Present.
Vice Chair Weston, you're muted.
Present, thank you.
There you go. And I am Chair Sherri Nichols. I look for a motion to approve the agenda tonight.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the agenda is approved. This is the point in the meeting where we here, we have provide opportunity for public comment on any item that is not the subject of a public hearing. We allow for approximately three minutes per speaker, and we have three people signed up to speak tonight. Ian, you can run it.
First up is Tom Markle.
Mr. Markle, come to the.
Working my way through the crowd here.
Yeah. Just shove everybody aside. You're first.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Tom Markle. I'm with the Nelson Legacy Group. Our office address is 16508 Northeast 79th Street. I'm here tonight in my capacity as Chair of the Government Affairs Committee at One Redmond. At your last meeting, Commissioner Aparna requested more information on the background and the basis for the job growth allocation in the urban centers' policies. At that meeting, I spoke regarding One Redmond's desire to see 10,000 jobs allocated to downtown, pardon me, to downtown. Staff addressed this matter in the Issues Matrix, and I wish to provide some additional perspective. The initial allocation of jobs done in 2021 for the Centers and Centers and Corridors Alternatives was created using a model developed by Burke Consulting. This model contained both a bias and a flaw. The bias was that it allocated growth in proximity to existing jobs. This is what I call the Overlake bias, since Overlake is job-rich and downtown has much less employment. The flaw in the model, however, was it could not evaluate the potential to combine small downtown lots into a single building site that could support a large building. And assembling small parcels is how large buildings are built downtown. This led to an initial under-allocation of both housing and jobs to the downtown, and downtown received just 467 and then 2235 jobs in the Centers and Corridors and Centers cases, respectively. Staff was made aware of these issues, and they made adjustments. They increased the allocation of jobs for downtown to 5,000 in the draft Environmental Impact Statement last year. Jobs were further increased to 5,945 in the current preferred alternative. So I want to acknowledge these increases and thank staff, because staff was listening. However, you know, we feel these changes aren't enough. The changes are all subjective adjustments based on the judgment of staff, and they're not based on a model, on specific data, on some sort of rule that has to be observed, or even, in our view, a comprehensive vision for the future of Redmond. One Redmond would like to see 10,000 jobs allocated to the downtown in Redmond 2050. Currently, Overlake has allocated 15,110 jobs and 10,000 housing units. One Redmond believes its request is very reasonable because, one, it addresses the already-large jobs versus housing imbalance that exists in the downtown. And downtown has a lot of housing and no jobs because office construction is largely precluded in the current building codes. It promotes the city's environmental sustainability objectives by allowing people who live downtown to walk to work. It supports our small businesses by providing a daytime customer base, and they are struggling. It takes advantage of the new light rail station and the investments the city has already made to accommodate growth downtown, and it creates a much more vibrant and interesting downtown which is going to benefit everyone who lives in Redmond, no matter what area of Redmond they live in. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Markle. Can you send that copies of your remark to us via email? Because the public hearing's been closed for verbal comments, so if you could send it to us as written, that'd be great.
Certainly, thank you.
Next, we have Katie Kendall, and I will call them now.
This is Katie.
Welcome to the Redmond Planning Commission meeting. We're taking public comment now, and you have about three minutes to share with us tonight.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Before I begin, I first want to note that I emailed comments yesterday to the Planning Commission and staff regarding my proposed changes to the mixed-use requirements in Overlake Village related to the Centers element. I hope you received those, and I hope those will be part of your consideration this evening. What I wanted to talk about in my public comments tonight is the land use element. I first want to say that the consolidation of zones is a welcome change. However, I do ask staff and Planning Commission to reconsider the allocation of uses to ensure the city is capturing the best available land for transit-oriented housing development. As some of the Commissioners may recall, the CIM group proposed for the Docket a Comprehensive Plan Amendment that would convert its property from manufacturing into a design district designation to allow for much-needed housing in southeast Redmond. CIM site is approximately 10 acres and is located at the corner of Redmond Way and 180th Avenue Northeast, across the street from Whole Foods. The feedback from the Planning Commission at the time was that this individual Comprehensive Plan Amendment was better suited for discussion as part of Redmond 2050, which is why I'm here today. As you can see from the proposed land use maps and zoning maps, the property still remains in manufacturing designation. We asked that the Planning Commission change this designation to mixed-use or another similar designation that would allow housing production. The site is within a 10-minute walk shed from the future light rail station, as well as many existing popular commercial and retail uses, and represents a prime location for future transit-oriented housing. Right now, most of the current uses on the site are commercial and client and public-facing uses. The newest leases are fitness and food and beverage versus legacy manufacturing. Preservation of industrial zoning cannot single-handedly reverse market demand and evolving community needs. We do understand from staff that there are concerns regarding traffic, safety, and infrastructure if housing is provided on the east side of Redmond Way. We believe those are solvable issues that CIM is willing to help solve. In fact, we believe that adding residential housing on our site provides opportunities to study and consider a range of improvements to signalization and crossing routes for pedestrians and bikes accessing the retail and train station in the west. Zoning regulations can also be crafted to allow housing on the site after particular conditions are met. It does not have to be a no to housing forever, especially considering the significant housing needs noted by the city staff. CIM also recognizes there needs to be a transition in uses between residential and industrial uses, and with a 10-acre site, there's actually opportunities to incorporate some more funky transitional light manufacturing uses on the east side that can serve as the transition to housing on the west side along Redmond Way. And I do want to, for the record, reiterate that CIM understands the importance of retaining manufacturing land where it makes sense and where industry is locating, but this property is manufactured and named only currently, and we do not see that trend reversing. We ask the Commission to recognize this reality and consider allowing housing on CIM's properties. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks.
Next up, we have Jessica Rowe, and I will call them now.
This is Jessica Rowe.
Hi, you're on with the Planning Commission. You have about three minutes.
Good evening. Okay, thank you. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to comment and for your work to date on the comprehensive plan update. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of NAB Washington. We represent commercial real estate owners and developers across all asset classes. Amongst them, we represent about a dozen multifamily developers who have been heavily engaged in reviewing the policy recommendations on a variety of issues related to housing development, including AMI and parking requirements. We wanted to let you know tonight that we are not making substantive comments on those issues, because we understand there will be workgroup sessions on the topics forthcoming in August. We're looking forward to it. We understand the workgroup discussions will include housing providers and city staff and provide us with the opportunity for discussion and collaboration around the model used to validate the recommendations in the housing element. We will have substantive input to provide in the workgroups, and we're looking forward to it. We're hopeful that we can continue to collaborate so that housing development continues and is successful in Redmond. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Okay, that's all. Everybody who signed up for items from the audience. And with that, we will move on to Redmond 2050 Centers Element Study Session. Becky.
At the public hearing at our last meeting, we closed the comments for verbal comments and opened it for written comments.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, thank you. So the public hearing was closed to verbal comments, so the verbal comments related to this topic that were received tonight will have to get in writing while the written public hearing is still open. We did receive Katie Kendall's email that she just mentioned. It does request an edit to OV2. When we get to the Issues Matrix, we can share her email and the edit that she's requesting. That is the only written comment we received in the meantime. I'm going to go ahead and open up the Issues Matrix, but at this time, I would like to ask if you would like to close the public hearing comment for written or leave it open?
Let's leave it open.
Okay, great. So the purpose of the study session tonight is to review the items on your study session agenda, excuse me, your Issues Matrix. And if you want to close those items or add anything new, at the end of this evening, we will ask you if you would like to go ahead and make a request to staff to prepare the recommendation for your next meeting, or if you would like to leave that open-ended for a little bit. There's a couple of different options, because we are pairing it with the Overlake code, and the Overlake code is you could either go ahead and finish up with the policies or just kind of leave it out there until you've reviewed, and we could come back together with a recommendation for both at the same time. So we'll just leave that open for you guys, whatever your comfort level is. But let's go ahead and share the screen and open up your Issues Matrix. So the first item was a request for information about the growth allocations and how downtown was allocated jobs. I put a link in here to the staff report that went to City Council that allows us to provide a lot of information without actually cluttering up an extensive amount of your Issues Matrix. And I did put the start time for the video, so you could jump directly to that. I hope that was helpful. If you haven't had a chance to review that, it was a good discussion. What we do have in your Issues Matrix is some additional information specific to downtown, some of the things that we did to get to that preferred alternative, some of the changes that occurred, and also just some comparison from a size perspective when looking at downtown and Overlake. And then there's some additional things that will come out of modeling and the DEIS process that actually does compare locations and what is easy to do or has greater or lesser impacts. So all of that was a part of the consideration of how we allocated the jobs. But if this is enough information, or if you'd like additional information, just let me know if we'd like to keep it open or if you'd like to close it.
Commissioner Aparna.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Becky. The links are really useful, so perfect. I kind of watched the whole thing and went through the presentation. I, in my mind, I'm still not understanding a couple of things, and I don't know if I have misread it or did not understand something, so please be patient. But primarily, I'm trying to, so I did watch the council's concerns that, you know, okay, you could sell a property and it could change, the use could change, so on, in Overlake from Microsoft to somebody else, so on. So I get that we do not want to plan for that, but what we do want to do is make sure that the barriers are lowered if such changes should occur.
Right.
So I don't know how rigid the land use part is and how those calculations would change, but it's less about changing the numbers. It's, to my mind, I'm trying to understand. My guess is there's not a single number. It's always going to be a range, right? So a little bit of understanding on the range would help. And from a perspective of commenting on the downtown, and this I'm putting out to the Commissioners as well, like, the city that I envision is a place where, obviously, Overlake and downtown are going to be higher density, but it also means that they are both vibrant day and night. It's the place we would go to party in from the slightly lower, the lower-density neighborhoods that we would have, right? So from a perspective of, I don't know, because we haven't seen that much in terms of downtown, I don't know, but that could generate jobs in a different way, right? I mean, it could revitalize in a different way. I'm not saying just offices or something, because I know that commercial real estate's having huge upheaval, right? But if you look at it from a retail or any other, like, just, let's just get creative with this, because you've got the light rail in both centers. We have to capitalize on that. And that's, I think, significant. We have to develop around that. So if we have to kind of rethink allocations, I don't know if that's making sense, Commissioners.
Commissioner Van Nyman.
I want to back up and ask just a really fundamental question, and I know Mr. Markle has addressed this, and I didn't necessarily catch it the first time. This was his comments two weeks ago. And I want to understand, what are the ramifications? We've, I mean, the housing is a little bit easier to understand when we start designating housing. When we start designating jobs, what does that lead to as far as the city's actions? So we've only designated 2,000. Turns out, there really is this increased demand for, that leads to jobs in downtown. Is there something that the city has done that has prevented the full, you know, fulfillment of that demand for jobs? Or is there something the city could have done better to allow for the growth in jobs that it, do you know what I'm saying? Like, that it would have otherwise done if the number had been bigger? What are the ramifications of the actual, like, these are just numbers on paper, right? The free market is going to tell you where the jobs go, but there's obviously planning that the city is doing that has some impact, and I would like to understand what that impact is.
I can provide some insight on both of those tonight, but we can add some more information to your Issues Matrix moving forward as well. We are definitely planning for both Overlake and downtown to be vibrant and have a good amount of jobs and housing. We are, we have updated the story map for the preferred alternative, and I'm going to shift to that really quick. I don't want to spend, like, the bulk, this isn't a preferred alternative public hearing, it's a Centers Policy public hearing, so I don't want to spend too much time on it today, but I do want to share some resources that might be helpful. But in this story map, and I'll put the link in the information as well, so that the community and the Planning Commissioners can go out and take a look at it. But in the preferred alternative information that compares to what is happening to existing capacity, you can actually do a slider, and you can actually see, excuse, sorry, loading and unloading, but you can actually see the job allocation changes. So this is under existing capacity, and that is future capacity, right? So you can see that it's actually having, there's a good change there. And then also, what we have down here is 2050 conditions. So you can actually see that there are, so here's the jobs ones. You can see that there is a significant amount of jobs in there, but the actual distribution pattern is really similar even to what we see today. But there's information on, all of this information is out there, and we are preparing a supplemental draft Environmental Impact Statement, which will have even more in-depth information about what the total number is and what the total impacts are and why, and the decisions that we made, including some of the other considerations that are going to be going into and affect, like the high-water table, the CARA, and the infrastructure, the challenges in a flat land with, yeah, so I mean, there's a lot of different reasons for distribution of growth, but this story map might be really helpful. And then the supplemental draft Environmental Impact Statement will be published in September, which will have a lot of information about that as well. I also.
I'm not asking about the impact to this, that would happen if the different job numbers occurred.
Yeah.
On the city. I'm asking, what is it that the city does with the job number?
Yeah, and I was just getting to that, but your question was slightly different than hers, yeah. So what we are doing with job allocations is each job has a certain number of square footage assigned to it. So King County is using 300 square foot per job for office and that type of thing, 700 for industrial and manufacturing. Okay, so what we need to do is make sure that in the underlying zoning district, we have capacity for that square footage. But that square footage is going to change over time, because we've seen the work from home, is it really 200 for square foot? But that's not a big deal. What we need to do right now is just make sure that this square footage that we've been assigned, we can show how the underlying zoning district can accommodate that. And it's just in this periodic review update, there is also changes that can happen annually. There can changes, the individual property owner can come in and request changes through a development agreement or rezoning or Comprehensive Plan Amendment. There's lots of different processes that change can happen, and it's intended to be just a snapshot in time for this particular project. So it's not saying that forevermore, we will only have this amount of, it just means as a part of this process, we have to document for, to get certified, that we have enough capacity in our zoning to meet those job goals as a square footage number.
What if the city ended up being totally wrong?
And we change it, yeah. So every 10 years, we update it, but we have a five-year report that we have to submit to, and if we're totally off-target, we could potentially change it through an annual Docket application process.
Is there, this new employer that's come, they build, they want to build out at RTC, and they have the space, and they come to you for some sort of approval that you can't give them?
No. They would just come through a different process. They're just not a part of what we're doing today. So they can come in as an individual project and an individual property owner and make a request. That is something that happens all the time.
Follow up with that. So if we do allow, so I know that we have the Docket process, we have the Complan Amendments and all of that. For me, I see that as a, we need to reduce that from as, to as little as possible. So the idea being that the exceptions should be as few as possible, simply because then the process doesn't get burdensome for city or developers.
And we agree, and that's what we're doing.
Okay.
Okay, so what we're looking at today, again, just to re-center into what we're looking at today for this public hearing, is just the policy. We need to get to the zoning updates, and part of the zoning updates is going to be we're reducing the number of zoning districts, we're making it more simple. Right now, we've got, within each downtown zoning district, it's, depending on your property size, you have limitations that are different, right? So we're going to make that simpler. There are things that are in the current code that have been, where housing and office have not been on the same level, they've not been on the same playing field, right? So we're going to be making those changes. That is something that will make it easier to do office, but office is currently at 25% vacancy, too. So the demand for office will see as market conditions change, but the actual underlying zoning districts in downtown today, if you have the right-sized parcel, is actually really unlimited. But there are some limitations that make it harder for office related to parking and that type of thing, and those things are being changed. So we are leveling the playing field, and we are making those changes, but that's not today. That's not this policy that is actually in the downtown zoning code changes that will be coming in several months down the line.
Is it fair, is it fair to say, Becky, that the only thing in the Centers Policy that actually acts as a limit on jobs in downtown are the preferred alternative numbers that are in this document?
And I wouldn't even call it a limitation, because again, it's just saying that that's the minimum we have to accommodate in this process.
Okay.
It is not a limitation, it's a minimum.
Okay.
Follow-up question. Would these numbers change if the EIS comes out differently or something changes further down?
If the modeling results indicate that something in the preferred alternative would be just way too expensive or way too difficult, or there's an infrastructure thing that we cannot fix within this period, then we would make an adjustment. And that's the reason for the modeling of the preferred alternatives, is to tell us if there's anything else that we need to adjust, just, it could be a financing thing. You know, if we need a pump station in downtown to accommodate the level of growth there, that, do we have the financing that we can do that? It's just, there's so many different layers of all of this. But that is the reason why we do the modeling, and that's why we're putting this supplemental draft Environmental Impact Statement together, is so that people can see all of that before we actually get to a final EIS.
Thank you.
But yes, this may change a little bit. I don't anticipate major changes, because again, it's not really a major change from what we studied in the draft Environmental Impact Statement, but there might be some nuances of changes that the modeling will tell us, let's make a tweak over here or there, just to make it a little bit easier to implement.
Thank you. I think we can close this, because Ian sent the link. Oh, Ian, maybe you could send the link via email to everybody who's not on Teams right now. And I think, just as more information comes in, this is just one more link for more information, so we could close this one.
I have your comments from today, too. Would you agree that the jobs thing, do we want to keep it open for that, or?
I understand I'm kind of outside of scope, so that's fine, we can close it.
All right. We will definitely be coming back to you with a lot of information about the zoning changes, so that will be addressing what has been causing some friction that is making office a little bit difficult. So that is definitely happening, it's on the to-do list, it's part of Redmond 2050, it's just not tonight in this policy.
Great.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on.
All right. So the next one is also Aparna's.
Yeah, we can close that, thank you.
Okay.
Oh, put the Issues Matrix back up?
Yes, please put the Issues Matrix back up. Yes.
Switch back. That's about flexibility.
Yes.
Okay.
This one.
Is there anything new for the general policies that we'd like to add to the Issues Matrix?
I don't have.
Okay. So the first one under Overlake is the mixed-use flexibility. This is the one that the email came in from Katie Kendall about. Her request, if you haven't read her email, she actually was.
We actually didn't, haven't received that one. I didn't receive it.
It came into the inbox. Okay, I will forward it to you. But I will. It went into the Planning Commission inbox, but I'll forward it to you directly. Okay. But her request was to strike such as parcel size and/or slope from the actual verbiage here, as it is a Comprehensive Plan policy, recommend removing the explanation of site conditions, because it could be read.
Yeah.
As a limitation, and actually just put those exceptions actually in the code instead. I'm amenable to that, if you guys are.
I'm amenable to that.
Yeah, I think that's fine. Yeah, I think that's fine. She did also have some comments in here about the client that she's working with has extremely limited street frontage. So if the striking of that, exceptions from the policy, we could discuss that further in the actual code pieces if we need to.
I'm happy with this. I mean, I think the big hangup was the not understanding that this was an or, not an and. That was the big hangup last, last time. And then that sometimes the street frontage doesn't really support retail or mixed-use viability. I'm happy with this change.
All right, so go ahead and mark that as closed.
Yes.
Okay. Great. And then the last one was some just information about when the code will be effective, and how that process for those that are currently in the review cycle will be given that option. So we've just documented that that is going to be here in your next package. I will actually have had the time to actually go through and talk to our development review staff about which types of projects that they would want to include, and which ones they don't want to include. And we'll provide some more information for you there. But yes, it is going to be called out. If you are in the review process, and you're substantially in this process, at adoption, in the ordinance, we will have a provision that says you can pick and choose if you want to do the new one, or continue under the existing code. And so that will be up to them at that point to make the call. We will document, it'll be a part of our tracking system, and then we'll just continue reviewing under the existing code if they'd like to choose to do so.
Commissioner Weston or Aparna, do you have any? Go ahead.
I think this is fine, as long as we have the list and we're working with them. I mean, this is more about making sure that everybody who has to be grandfathered and is grandfathered in, right?
Yeah. Yeah, it's technically not a grandfathering type of provision, but yeah, I get what you mean.
It's the spirit of it, let's put it that way. You're not legally grandfathered. I had one more issue to add.
Okay.
And this, I think I pointed out, it's still hearing as opposed to heating in OV11.
Oh, I-
So it's just, it's just a typo, but kind of does make sense, so, thanks.
Okay. Commissioner Weston?
Yep, I'm good to close.
I'm going to propose that we not make a recommendation tonight, since we know we've got written testimony coming in. So we'll keep the hearing open for written testimony, and we will consider making, perhaps making a recommendation at our next meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Becky. And with that, we will move on to Redmond 2050 Overlake Zone Regulations Study Session. Becky!
This one's-
Kim!
Yeah. This one, again, because as of our testing for last year, one of the feedback was, it's so confusing, there's so much going on. We're moving forward with, Kim and I are partnering on everything from here on out. You'll see us together a lot. So tonight, we're going to go through, and we have taken your PowerPoint from our last meeting and blew it up to actually dive in to a lot more detail. So as we're starting to go through and prepare for the public hearing cycle, I'm going to go ahead and pull that up, and then Kim and I'll just walk through those pieces. The high-level information that we did cover last time, we're not going to spend a lot of time on this time. I just wanted to keep it in the PowerPoint packet for those who haven't necessarily been attending every meeting, it's just to have it all in one spot was nice. So let me go ahead and do that. If it will let me share. So as a reminder, we have a lot of moving parts. This is the package. There are a lot of pieces that are related to the Redmond zoning code that we are moving forward in the Redmond 2050 Overlake package. There are also, not called out here, but there is one item of Overlake that's going into Ian's housing package, and that is the actual affordable housing percentages. So just wanted to point that out. That is a part of his chapter of code, and it's, since he's doing a lot of edits to that chapter, it makes more sense that he'll bring that edit. But again, a lot of this is going at the same time. You're going to seeing all of these public hearings happen in August, so, but just keep that in mind. You will not see that in what we're covering today, because it will be in his. So the first thing is that first package that we're bringing on August 9th. We tried to siphon off the easy stuff to go first, because we wanted the bigger things, the bigger changes, to have more time for you to review. So the first pieces that are moving forward are under the zoning code rewrite, public art, and solid waste. We are both making edits to the general provisions in 2104. We've also folded in some housing updates to our package, so that, again, you only see 2104 once if we can. And same thing with definitions. All three of us have changed definitions, but you're going to see it in my code package for Overlake. And then in the Redmond 2050 pieces that are going to public hearing first, you're going to see special districts, the high-capacity transit repeal, the TDR program edits, the transition overlay edits, and the master plan development pieces. So again, some of these are pretty straightforward, some of these are new, but they're codifying current processes, so we'll walk you through that a little bit more in depth. And I am going to tag Team Kim on a lot of these slides, so bear with us, please.
Thank you, Becky. This first one, 2104, includes a change that is to assist applicants and staff, particularly in our allowed use tables. We use the, we use an L to indicate whether something has a limited allowance to a business type, or a land use type, to be in a zoning district. And this has become a little bit confusing for staff, because we use L to reflect different things, whether something is limited by geography, or limited by its activity. You can have a business, but then within a business, you have certain activities, so some might be prohibited. And it might be that you have a special district in which a land use can occur, but it can't occur in the rest of the district. So a variety of uses that would indicate that something is limited. And here you can see an example I pulled from an overview table, that is the first table you see, sort of in the middle of the page, and then in a regulations table on the very right side of the page. And these show how L is used in the first case, that it is limited by the actual uses within a category. So you can have a broader category, but only one use in that category is allowed. And then in the next table, there are special regulations that apply. So while a use is allowed, there's special regulations that need to be accounted for. So we're simply doing that to help staff and applicants, because this is one of the frequent questions that we receive.
So one of the other changes that's moving forward, that's part of the housing update that is going in our package, is state law has changed to allow faith-based organizations to build affordable housing on property they own. And so that is just a footnote being added to these charts in 2104, just to make sure that folks know that that is something that they're allowed to do. The other change that's actually happening, sorry, we're going back and forth, in 2104 is the use tables in 2104 have to change, because we're changing the zoning districts for Overlake. So keeping in mind that in 2112, we have the zipped-up version of the use table that is shorter, and then the blown-out categories with all of the specific details actually in 2104. But now we're having to combine and move some columns, we're adding a column for the new Overlake or multifamily zoning district. So those changes are in alignment with each other, and at your last meeting, they asked, where is the adult uses? That was in 2112, it's part of a roll-up, but it is in 2104, okay? So if you don't see something in 2112, it's because that is the rolled-up version, you can just refer to the longer, more detailed version in 2104. Okay. All right. So in 2105, we're creating a very new section that is actually to implement the transit-oriented development focus area and the cultural districts. Again, this is, creating this chapter will allow us to create TOD focus areas in other places, different types of cultural districts in other places. It just allows it, it to have its, a home. But the other reason why making this happen and not having it in 2112 is because transit-oriented development doesn't have to be light rail oriented either, right? It could be on a bust rapid transit line. So this just gives us a lot of flexibility for these types of activity zones that we want to use, and it's essentially an overlay. We were asked by staff when we were trying to figure out this transit-oriented development area, which you would be eligible for the incentives, or the different densities and whatnot, to not have it based on distance, but to actually have a location, because there's so many questions when you have distance. Is that from the center of the parcel, from the edge of the parcel, from the closest corner, or where is it measuring to, where from? And so staff was just like, for the sake of everybody, making it easy to understand, are you in, or are you out? Let's just create an area, and then everybody knows if, yes, no, we're good.
Can I go back to 2104 for just a second?
Sure.
There were a number of places in the code document where it said, had notes about need to be clarified, needs to be clarified.
Those were administrative, and they have been reviewed, removed.
Okay.
At least for now.
Okay.
I do want to remind you that we have a lot of work that's going to happen in 2104 next year.
Yeah.
As we go from 50 to 20 zoning districts, those tables are all going to be rewritten.
Absolutely.
So there's a certain level of effort that we are willing to do this year, and then there's a certain level of effort that we're going to wait till next year to do. So there's, yeah, it's a reflection.
Just wanted to make sure I understood what was going on.
Yeah, thank you. And as I mentioned at our last meeting, this is just being struck, because obviously the light rail stations are almost open, we don't need to preserve that land anymore.
Okay, the next one is public art. And I think, I believe it was 2017, the city council approved the public art plan for private development. And you can see two examples of installation of public art on the exteriors of two projects that are within Redmond, one's in Marymore and one's in downtown, near downtown park. This art plan had not been codified or mentioned within the zoning code. However, the zoning code has included provisions for the requirement of art, such as when you have a large expanse of blank wall, art can be used as one of the methods for mitigation. What staff is proposing is that that public art plan, the provisions of it, which include the definitions, a process authority during the review process, the administration of it, and the procedures through which an installation would occur, as well as any modifications to that would occur, we would like those to be codified within the code to provide clarity to applicants, and also to provide clarity to the Redmond Arts Commission, who would be the, have the authority to review and make recommendations regarding the art.
Commissioner Aparna.
I actually have a little bit of a problem with this. I know that we need some kind of guideline and framework, right? But I'm very worried that we get overly prescriptive, and it's onerous on people who really just want to do something, and I'm like, well, right? I mean, and also, from a, from a perspective of what art is, we get into censorship by having too much oversight in terms of content and form, and, you know, they might like something and I don't, or I like something and they think it's utter rubbish. So I'm really concerned, because when I read the redline text, there's a, it should be a little more fluid, a little more organic. I don't know how else to put it, but is there a way to kind of squish the process down a bit? I get that we need a process, but can we work on it to make it a little less burdensome and a little more fluid? Because over time, we don't want it, like, we don't want all rules gone, because then you'll end up, you know, it won't look good, but, because I don't want it to be like, have you guys seen the movie Hot Fuzz?
No.
Okay? He knows what I'm talking about. It's a highly recommended movie. It's really funny. But basically, it's a little town which gets all excited about it being the best little town, and gets awards year on year. And it's a satire, okay, but basically, I could spoil it for you guys, but it over-prescribed aesthetic requirements, and a lot of guns come out, and they knock off anybody. So there's this living statue guy who comes, and they object to it on aesthetic, for aesthetic reasons, and then they kill him. So not going that far, but what I'm trying to say is that we don't want to be that city. We want to have that little personality going for us, you know? So I don't know how to make it, you know, lighter, but anything would be good.
Okay. I have some ideas that I can bring forward in your next issue matrix. I would share tonight that the reason for defining what art is, the definition alone, is that we have had in the past the installation of art from a catalog. And that is one of the intents behind the council's original approval of the plan. The plan has been used since it was first approved by council, so I think since 2017. And you can see art that has been installed in the Marymore Village area and the new construction. So if you have an opportunity before we come back to you, maybe you'd like to visit that location and see how it is actually implemented in the field.
Or go to an Arts and Culture Commission meeting. Yeah, this is, the point is, this is not a, Kim did not design this process in writing this code.
I get that.
This is the process that has been in use in the city.
Right.
You just codified it.
If we have a chance to redesign this process, I would try to make it lighter as an ongoing thing, but, and that's, that goes for my critique on the DRB as well, but let's not go there, another day. But, Kim, it's not a reflection on what you've written there, it's just, for me, I'm looking at, everything else is being streamlined so well. This feels a little bit differently handled. And maybe it's coming from somewhere else, but it's something we should think about. It's in the spirit of the rest of it.
Yes.
Less zoning districts, and I'm all for simplifying.
Okay. I think I could bring back some information that would be helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. I have a small addition that I'd love to see added to this. I love when art includes an artist's statement, or a philosophy, or some description. I just think it makes it, like, a lot richer experience to see art out in public. And an example of that would be the Erratic Sculpture downtown. It's, it's a, obviously, like, a surprisingly large piece, but you don't really understand what it was about until you get to read the plaque that says what the artist intended by it. So I don't know that necessarily needs to be a plaque, but I would love a part of the submission process included, just a statement of what it's intended to reflect into the community.
Commissioner Nueva Camina?
Susan, I think that that is a really great request, in how it can build community and just be another connection point. I'd like to add that, have it be encouraged or optional for the artist, and give them agency as to whether or not they include it. They may choose not to, for whatever their reason. They, they may choose not to for whatever their reason is, but encouraged, definitely.
That exists.
Mr. Scheffler.
Yes, thank you. Just a quick question. When we're talking about art, are we also talking about performing art?
This art would be physical. However, art spaces might be proposed. And let me confirm how that would work if someone did propose an art space. And the reason I mention that is that I think spaces are included into some of the projects in the Marymore Village. So let me add that to the issues matrix and get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Nueva Camina.
Thank you, Chair. Kim, for art spaces, an example for that, would that include the stage at downtown park as an art space? Because I know that, that the, that the stage itself is registered art, so we can't, you know, alter it in any kind of way, but would that include an art space?
That would be the equivalent of an art space, but because, as you mentioned, it, it itself is also art. So when I think of art space, it would be something that is a place that has the provisions to support art and a performance. So I think of like electricity, I think of lighting, I think of a designation as far as the operations of that space. There might be more.
Okay.
But yeah, let me, let me dig into that a little bit and bring it back in the issues matrix.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Aparna.
And the only requirement I think we should have in here is that it is vetted for being, how do I put it? Inclusive is not the word. It's more like no hate is what's coming to my head is from a censorship or whatever standpoint, if somebody doesn't like the aesthetic, that's one thing, but there are certain things that we do not want as public art, right? So some very minimal guidelines around no hate, I think, works. Very simplistic, but yeah. Frankly, that should be one of the only guidelines in terms of content, right? I mean.
I, I think we're getting maybe off track, but in theory, you could put forward a pencil and call it art. And then that didn't really meet the requirement, did it? You know, it didn't meet the intention. Or paint the wall purple and say, that's my purple art.
Oh, that's, the, the job of the Arts and Culture Commission is.
Are we ready to move on for that?
I think we're ready to move on.
Okay, this one.
Oh, yes, we can.
This one is also, it originated during the rewrite. And this was recognized as a need for the city to address the spacing provisions inside new development to support solid waste, which includes your garbage, your recycling, and compost. During this opportunity, staff also realized there were several issues that they wanted to resolve. One of them is when the waste containers are set out for pickup. Sometimes there is not a, there is not planning that happened for that type of activity, and therefore they result in them being in a place where they really shouldn't be for ADA access, for vehicular access, for pedestrian safety. And so staff used this as an opportunity to talk about what is called the temporary staging areas for waste on those days during pickup. There are other provisions that came into play. For example, how does waste get from your unit into the container within the building? Is the unit in the garbage or in the, the parking area? Is it a compactor and how does that operate? So there are many provisions that came into this. And as a result, you can see in the bottom right, there is a new solid waste design guideline that will help applicants calculate the footprint of the waste and container needs based on the number of people living or the number of people working within their building. So we're trying to build clarity into this, use a lot of illustrations. Now, some of that information is going to come later in the process. So for now, you have the strike changes in the code. This is an entirely new chapter. We felt it had enough information that it could be a new chapter in the code, and then the waste guide will come at a later date.
I have several questions because this is brand new, I mean, all new, and it is significantly different than what I observe as currently the case. Particularly prioritizing indoor locations for solid waste. That doesn't seem to be the case typically. And when containers are stored outside, they have to have a roof. That's not typical today, as far as I know, can tell. And, you know, have overhang, anyway, predict, basically prevent rainfall from getting in the containers. And that the pickup trucks don't have to back up. So these are all, seem to me to be pretty significant changes to current practice.
Not all of them. The roof provisions are in place today, however, they might, they wouldn't be in this section because it is new. So you might find them in a different section of our code, but those are in place today to protect stormwater runoff from garbage leakage and getting into the stormwater runoff. So we don't want that. And the other is the backing up of the vehicles. That is actually something that is not allowed, but it does take place because of the certain limitations. So we're making that more clear that it is not supported.
I guess, I've had some experience with dumpster diving, unfortunately. I had a child who didn't always remember to get her retainer off of her lunch tray. And my memory is that those dumpsters were not under a roof. And I would assume that the code applies to schools in the city of Redmond, just like it applies to everybody else. So.
That is true. You need to go forward. When, when a provision is put into the code, you typically go forward and then you can work backwards and you try to help the applicants. You support them in trying to meet the new code, but the code is strongly administered from that point of adoption going forward.
Okay.
Yeah.
Commissioner Aparna.
I think this is, I really like this section because having worked on healthy buildings as in wellness in buildings, all these are really good for the occupants as well from, you know, and I like the idea of the composting for the multifamily and planning for that as well, which is great. So I think I really like this section. That's what I think, so.
I didn't, didn't mean to imply that I was critical of this section. I was just trying to understand.
I, I didn't mean that, Cherry, but I, I, I kind of read this with pleasure, so I just want to share that, so.
Staff that's been working on it for the last two years to get it to this point, I'm sure will appreciate that comment.
Yeah. Anybody else want to talk about solid waste?
Did you want a response to your earlier comments on this?
No.
Okay.
I was just trying to, to clarify and understand.
Okay.
What current practice was, you know, what the current practice in the code was.
Thank you.
How big a change this represented.
Okay.
Okay. We can move on from solid waste.
All right. So again, we, minor, minor updates to 2180, 48 Transfer Development Rights Program. We're just to reflect the brand new zoning district in Overlake. That's it. It is taking an existing number from another district in Overlake and giving it the same, you know, weight in the TDR program, and that's it. We do anticipate future changes to the TDR program coming as a part of a future Redmond zoning code rewrite phase or some other update process. But yes, there will be changes to this program, but not in this package, just the new zoning The transition overlay areas section of code is intended to provide a, an area that eases between those higher use zoning districts and those lower use zoning districts. In Overlake, it only impacts the Overlake Business and Advanced Technology or OBAT zoning district. That's the only one that's listed. However, it does impact a good chunk of OBAT, and it requires an additional setback of 150 feet or 300 feet, depending on what it's adjacent to. And that includes adjacency to Bellevue zoning districts that are the low density housing areas. So this is a direct conflict with our implementation of TOD and transitioning away from campus style development. We had originally proposed, just making an exception if you're in the TOD focused area, just lifting that requirement entirely. After some additional feedback and conversation with property owners and developers in other areas, with this as a slight change, we're proposing to make it lifted for all of OBAT, but instead of the setback having a height restricted area. So this does keep the community's concern about having some kind of a transition, which is the intention of this section of code is, as the tradition. But it still allows the building to come up to the streets, allows the TOD focus, design standards and all of those things to be implemented. This has been a catch 22 section of code. Their developers don't realize it's there until it's too late because it's in 2150 and we have setbacks and all of these other things in other places. So one of the things that we may also consider at some future point in time is moving this to make it a little bit more accessible. But for right now, all we're trying to do is say, if you're inside the metro area, the metro center entirely, you're just going to have a height limit in these circumstances instead of a setback. So again, it is a change from what we had originally proposed, but as a part of the testing and community feedback, we've made this change. Any questions on that? Yep. All right. So this is a couple of things happening in 2176 in our Land Use Action section for master plan developments. We've, this is a staff initiated change to decouple master plans from development agreements. Right now, they're required, and so the review process and approval process for them are, they, they have to go to city council and there's just a significant process that is going through. This change does make a development agreement optional if you're doing a master plan development. So if you need a development agreement, you can choose to do so, and you can choose to bring them forward at the same time as a joint review and approval process. But you don't necessarily need to go through that development agreement process if you don't need to. There's also a couple of centers naming updates as well. And there's an edit in this section as well that refers back to 2112. And it is relating to if you are significantly underdeveloping the property as a part of the master plan process, we would just include information about how you can add additional density in the future. So I'll go through the exact provisions of that here in another slide, but it just references back to that, please don't underdevelop this property provision that we're adding in. And it's just additional information that would come in as a part of the master plan development. So definitions are being touched by your trifecta in front of you. We have a lot coming out of the work that we're doing for centers in Overlake, including, we're adopting the new centers definitions, or the regional centers selection of menu options. We're adopting Transit Oriented Development definition, which is the regional TOD definition. There's a slight wording change to kind of match how Redmond likes to word things. And we're adopting a definition for equitable TOD. Again, it's based off some regional work that was received, a federal grant to do several years ago. We're just picking up what has been done at a regional level and adopting those centers and TOD definitions. We've also been working really closely together with Philly, our Economic Development Program Manager, and creating affordable commercial, small business, locally owned business definitions so that the work that we're trying to do with the incentive program and our anti-displacement programming and all of that kind of stuff actually has very specific definitions. As you may have recalled with the town center updates recently, there was definitions for how things went through with that, but it was just for that project. And we need some permanent definitions for these terms. And after a lot, a lot of back and forth conversations, what you see in your packet has been proposed, the definition will be key clean, and then the actual specifics of how we would implement it and what incentive program or what service would be provided is, would be in other sections of code. The faith-based definition is being adjusted to add affordable housing. And then, Kim?
Susan, Commissioner Weston has a question.
I, I just wanted to say how much I like all these new definitions. The, it just, the clarity is excellent. The only very small change I had was moving all the cannabis related ones into the C-section. I didn't actually see that, a note that that was going to, that they were going to move.
Sorry, I missed that.
She was asking if the, if the, I believe she was asking if the cannabis one definition was going to move to the C-section.
Yes, I made the changes where they were in the M section and they would be in alphabetical order. Thank you for pointing that out.
It's so tiny. Thank you.
Commissioner Aparna.
I didn't see this presentation, oh, sorry. I'm not seeing the presentation in the meeting materials, so.
Is it not posted?
I don't know if I missed it, but I didn't see this one. I've been using the one from last week to orient myself on this one. So could you please add it after, so?
Oh, I apologize. It is, we will make sure that gets added to the online. I'm not sure what fell apart in that process.
That's, yeah, it's just so that we have context and we can go back and forth, so. Thanks.
Yep.
Thank you, Commissioner Aparna. I thought that it was me, so I appreciate you bringing that up. I just made a note, review 2178.
No, I, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that that never got published, so we'll get that published and distributed.
Definitions.
Do you want to do the other definitions?
But they're in the memo.
Yes.
Susan, do you have another question? Your hand's still up, that's.
Okay. There are a variety of definitions that also come from the rewrite effort. You can see those listed in the third bullet. So public art, live work units, balcony, yeah, balconies as well. There are many that came from working with our building division as well as the staff and current planning. And then you can see on the right side that there are the provisions, as was mentioned, of marijuana being changed to cannabis, and that's coming from the state level, so we just followed suit. It is a change in name only. There's no change to the code associated with that or where that use can occur within the city. The limited use will come into play here, so we're trying to be consistent with what we discussed earlier in 2104 by including what limited uses actually are. And then there's finally some cross-references and minor edits for clarity. And one of them is related to diversity, equity, and inclusion. We noticed that in our code, we do have uses of his, her, him, a variety of similar uses. And so we are changing those to be more equitable and inclusive.
Any questions on the?
Commissioner Aparna?
Just a question, the family daycare, if you remove the limit of 12 children, what is the, is there a limit or is it?
Yes, yes. So family daycare is something that you're going to see in the later package of cleanups. What is happening today is that the state is able to provide a waiver to daycares that allows them to, these are family home daycares, by the way, that allows them to have more children within the home to provide that care, and also to increase the number of staff that would be associated with those children. So there's a very careful review. However, in many cities and counties, the definition for the family daycare is very specific. It is to allow 12 children. And that, that originated at the federal level. So when the state made this change to provide these waivers, more of an opportunity, I should say. say, we were not, many cities and counties, were not ready to support that change because of our code. We are limited. And so what we are wanting to make sure to point out when I bring that code to you is that family daycares will be, there's re-emphasis on the code to make sure that health, safety, building codes, fire are those areas that are reviewed at the local level and require an approval process so that the waiver then can be implemented through our business license system. At a later date, we are anticipating there'll be more discussion about how those numbers might change, but it's not going to be within this timeframe.
Thanks. That makes sense.
This edit is also in line with some of the other definition changes that we're trying to do, where we're getting the regulations out of the definition itself. So the definition shouldn't be the regulatory piece of it. That should be elsewhere in code. This is just really in line with that. Okay. All right, so that is everything that's coming to you first. That's your first set of public hearing pieces. The next set is where we start to go into the actual 2112 regulations and starting to look at the design guidelines. So I do want to at least preview some of those pieces because those are the ones we get the most comments on, but I do know that you also have housing on your agenda today, so feel free to cut me off at some point if you need to. We have some more time for the ones that are going to the 30th. I also did want to talk a little bit about the stuff that's heading to the 30th. So before we actually close out this topic, either way, I do want to address that. But I would like to at least try to hit some of the more in-depth pieces for the 23rd So that includes 2112 except the incentive program. So the incentive program will not be on the public hearing for the 23rd. It does include some really, really minor edits to 2158 and the 2160, the towers going into tower patterns, what that would look like in the regulations for tower patterns are in 60, and then the Overlake-specific regulations in 2162. So I'm going to start with the design pieces first because 2112 takes a lot of time. So in 2158, all we're doing is updating the naming. In 2160, excuse me, it references 2162030, and that section has a name change. So in 2158, we're just changing the cross-reference name. That's it. Super simple. In 2160, again, we're just adopting high-rise tower regulations. This went out for testing and through the community phases in November, December, or January, and we did get some feedback on that. We have incorporated some of that feedback as well. I do also want to recognize that there are some things that we might be fine-tuning a little bit with this work that Kim's Redmond zoning code rewrite Phase III work because we recognize as you start to go up into towers, things like blank walls above the 12th story are going to be dealt with a little bit differently. So there's going to be some nuances that potentially are going to happen after we start looking at the citywide updates. But we did want to at least put in play the fact that you can do a tower under the new regulations, but it does need to have some type of design guidelines. So what you'll see in 2160 are stepbacks in placement and the distance between the towers and the rooftops and then the floor plates. The floor plates is where we got the most comment. So I don't know if you remember this conversation or if you read it at that time. It literally was like the biggest point of conversation related to design guidelines for Overlake, in part because the consultant that was working on this actually had recommended floor plates that the community came back and said, "That's not going to work. It's too small." Okay? So they were talking about if you have a tower, you have elevators, elevators take space, you have lobbies, and so all of these things impact how much space you actually need on the floor to make it actually work functionally and have rentable space. And so we did a lot of work with our technical advisor committee, doing a lot of research on folks who have design guidelines and talked to developers who do tower development and what they would see as a typical floor plate size. And we found a community that had a standard that we were going to pick up and say, "We like how that works. Let's fine-tune it a tiny little bit," and propose that for our towers. Obviously, as things start to get built, if we need to fine-tune them, we could. We don't anticipate a tower coming in tomorrow. But the tower alignment, what we have done to, what has changed from what went to testing to what you'll see in the public hearing document is the tower standards will only apply above the eighth floor. So anything below the eighth floor would just do however the current pattern is. But starting at the ninth floor and moving up, if it is office or non-residential, they have a larger floor plate. We have provisions in there for if it's one tower or two towers. That was another thing that came out of the community conversations is we have some really large parcels in Overlake that could potentially have more than one tower. Having a floor plate limitation that's really small basically eliminates the ability to do more than one tower. So we have provisions in there. And then the residential mixed-use or hotel, what we have done is added provisions. If it's above the 15th floor, that's when we'll pull it back in. So this defines towers and floor plates completely differently than what went to testing. But again, it's had a lot of minor testing conversations that are happening with developers in the meantime. So a lot of the feedback that we got from them was built into what you see today. Again, we're not going to see towers come in right away. We've heard a lot about the fact that the market's just not quite where they're right now, but we do want to be tower-ready, so. Any questions on the design guideline pieces? Okay. One of the other things that you'll see in 2162 is we start to look at the updates to parking locations, parking garage design guidelines, building form and scale based on articulation and modulation. Those are very specific words. But if you're going to push a building in and out or up and down just to create some different shapes, so it's not just one big box. And then building materials, the blank walls, ground floor retail. We're also integrating some design comments around incorporating and encouraging cultural elements in the intercultural district. So that's actually put in here in 2162. And universal design feedback from our disability stakeholders has been put into 2162 as well. So you will see that. You will also be seeing, as we went into testing for the incentive program, there were some things that were mandatory green building incentive items, and the community said, "Take those out and just make them mandatory just in general and not as a part of the incentive program." So we're going to be moving those things around, and you'll see them in 2162, but I don't quite have them there yet. But all of those things that we talked about in the green building program that would just be mandatory for the incentive are just going to be mandatory for Overlake. So those are actually going to be in 2162. Did want to, oh, go ahead.
Commissioner Aparna?
I had a question about the design standards. So I'm just curious, does envelope design come under, like, I know it straddles both building form and building materials, but envelope design is pretty critical for a lot of things. It's how the whole form is perceived, right? From a design standpoint, from a perspective of not having, let's say, you have a Frank Gehry building, and it all gets shiny on you and then, you know. So the envelope design kind of matters. The Frank Gehry building, it's true story. The LA Concert Hall, which he designed, across the street, they were finding things melting on the pavement because of the, so it's kind of important to think in terms of, and it's also the roof.
Provisions, do we? I'll have to look. I don't think we have, look, provisions currently. Let me take a look, though, and I'll.
Right, at least there should be a mention. I don't think we should be overtly prescriptive because that kind of reduces the, you know, material choice, but roof materials count a lot towards heat gain.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So just envelope design alone can save you tons of energy, you know, from an efficiency standpoint.
That's a good.
So I don't know if that's coming or, I don't know, so.
Well, if it doesn't make it into our package, I'm sure we can include it in what to look at in Kim's design guidelines from the city.
Yeah, it's early in the process for developing the downtown. We're looking at downtown, but they can equally translate over into the other urban centers.
Yeah, I just don't want to make it too prescriptive, right? But I just at least want to reference some things, right? So, thank you.
Yeah. Okay. I do want to point out a couple of the things that are going to be in 2162, again, as a direct response to what was brought up by our disability stakeholders. There's a couple of things. One thing that became very apparent, especially in this last year, as we were looking at equity in the built environment considerations, is there are no parking garages in Redmond where an accessible van can use. There's none. So the ceiling height and the design of the ceiling height on that first floor of a parking garage is making it to where certain members of our community cannot use the parking garage. And so that has come into play, and we're going to put that as a part of 2162. It doesn't necessarily have to be the entire first floor, but there has to be a spot near the entrance that an accessible van can access that parking garage and have an ADA van accessible space. So this is something that we're putting in there as a clearance requirement. We are putting in it as it will apply to both public and private parking garages. One of the things that is coming out of our way-finding conversations that will impact design guidelines is it makes it a lot easier for individuals who don't speak English, who can't read signs, or may have a disability that impacts their navigation skills. If we have an emphasis at an entrance or a corner lot or at key intersections where they can navigate easily visually, that helps them way-find on their own. And it's an independence-level, design-related piece. So again, it's just not necessarily requiring anything specific, but as you design a building in these locations, try to make sure that those areas stand out so that folks can easily find where the entrance of the building is, right? We've all been to buildings where nobody knows where the front door is. So just trying to make it easier for people to navigate. Then we also have in there provisions for utilizing universal design techniques, especially when you're looking at pedestrian plazas and open spaces. So we have got a lot of feedback for the need to consider access to those areas and making it easy for people to get in and enjoy those, depending on different needs. Trying to incorporate sensory inputs in particular is something that our community has asked for repeatedly, and so that is something that we've just put in there. Again, it's just so that as you're designing plazas and spaces, making sure that those are accessible to all ages and abilities, and we consider the needs of all of our community members. Also, our community members are asking that when we have mid-block connections to prioritize that those mid-block connections are fully ADA-accessible, that the route to them and through them is clearly labeled. We do have some that are accessible via elevator only, but the signage to the elevator is hidden, and there's, so they don't know that you can actually access those spaces. So we just have some language in there that talks about the signage and navigation and accessibility of those pathways. So those are some urban design standard updates. I'm going to just really quickly go through some of the other pieces for 2112. The parking ratios are being adjusted. This is a part of the citywide adjustment, but we wanted to speed-track the Overlake and make sure that as we adopt Overlake, even though the city isn't going to be ready until next year, that they can apply immediately. It is designed in such a way that if you're closer to the light rail stations, you could potentially have less parking, obviously. So that's in line with our current provisions that we're trying to do. If you're close to these locations, we'd have less parking. So I'm not going to necessarily go through the whole entire detail, but it is in your packet, and you can see how it lays out. There are some areas where, and some requirements, it's going to be the same if you're in the TOD or outside, but things like Dacre Center, if you're at Dacre Center right near a light rail station, you might have zero parking per employee, so. Okay. And then the other thing I really want to spend some time on tonight is just kind of explaining this because this, actually, we had some comments from the community about this last time. We did spend some time at our Overlake Code Update Workshop that we had, was it just last week? We spent an hour and a half going through all of this detail in there. We explained a little bit more about this, and we have some clarification that will be made in 2112 draft and that I'll be republishing. But the 70% requirement is tied to the max of your base FAR, so your maximum FAR without incentives. And for Overlake Village, that will be going up to an FAR of five, and that will mean that our, the FAR that would trigger this provision is three and a half. What we are seeing built today is three and a half to four. So what this does is it says, "Please don't do less than what you're doing today moving forward." So that's the, the whole section of code is taking today and making it our new standard, and don't go down from there. There was confusion because folks thought that this might be tied into the higher with incentives number, and so they thought maybe it was forcing them into steel construction. We did clarify that. A lot of people breathed the, "Okay, I get it. All right, problem solved, not concerned." But I do want to also point out that we are doubling the capacity for OBAT, and so that is a part of moving away from campus-style development into TOD. And so this provision really forces that, no more campus-style development. So it is different than today.
Commissioner Reddman?
Sherry's nodding her head like she's just totally following along, and I'm going to assume I'm not the only one who couldn't follow along. So I know we've covered this before, and I remember trying to follow along with the definitions. I'm still not really clear on the FAR because I know we've, I know we've talked about this before, but I want you to explain it to me like I'm an idiot.
So the floor area ratio is the square footage of the lot to the square footage of the building. Yeah. So if it's one-to-one, the exact same amount of square footage, I mean, it would be like 100% lot coverage at one story, right? But it could also be 50% of the lot coverage at two stories, but it's the same square footage. So the FAR changing here is just allowing you to add more stories. All right? So we're going from three and a half to five. You're allowing you to go taller.
So it's not, I understand it's not a, it doesn't mean floors, but it does mean more floors, the higher the number.
Yeah. Yeah. Because at some point, I mean, you can't spread out just other people's property, right? You have to be on your property. But it could be two towers. It could be, you could sprawl out or go really tiny and go really tall. So the FAR doesn't actually necessarily reflect the design of the building. It just has a.
But anything more than one is inherently more than one story.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yeah, by using FAR, you actually provide the developer flexibility in the form of the building, so they know the volume. Basically, we're giving them the volume based on their site, but then they get to choose how they want to use that volume.
Yeah. So the intent of this particular edit here, again, we're decoupling from the development agreement. There's some things in here that were in here that were only applied to Overlake that were actually, we wanted the flexibility statement to be citywide, so we moved it out into citywide section of code. But this future development plan is just a part of the master planning process. If you choose to significantly underdevelop the property based on what we need to see, you can still move forward, but we might say, "Can you do it in such a way that you're putting it in the corner and you're treating it as phase one and not building in such a way that nothing else can ever happen in the future?" So it just requires them to be thinking about the next step if they're coming in with a lower level of development today, or just planning for more and actually going up and actually doing a higher development. But again, three and a half to four is what we're seeing today. But again, three and a half to four is what we're seeing today, and so we're saying, today becomes the new standard. Don't do anything less than what we're seeing today.
Okay. It's 8:30, so I'm going to cut this off now. If you have more questions about this, we're going to be talking about this again.
I do want to just briefly touch on the incentive package piece.
Okay.
We had advertised for that to go to August 30. We may be bumping that. There's just a few things from the consultant's side that haven't quite been finalized, and so just to get a little bit more time for things, we might actually go ahead and push that out. And so, we'll talk to you a little bit later at your next meeting about if we are going to be moving that or not. I just wanted to at least give you some awareness that we might bump that out to allow more review time and conversation time with the community.
Okay. I'm going to propose that we take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back and start talking about land use. So, it's 8:32. We'll be back at 8:37. Thanks, and we're back. And we will go into study session on Redmond 2050 land use element. Ian and Lauren.
Thank you, commissioners. Let me just share my screen here. Okay. All right, we'll try to get through this. So, this is addressing some of the comments from our last study session, which was two weeks ago. So, we'll go through, and let me know if you have any other additional questions or any additional comments on these. So, we discussed what's the difference between neighborhood residential and neighborhood multifamily. So, we have a, the neighborhood residential is the consolidation of what is known today as the single-family zones, and the multifamily, and discuss consolidating the multifamily. Were there any additional comments or discussion points on that?
I think this is fine. Thank you. You can close it.
Okay.
Okay. All righty. Was there any additional? And I just want to emphasize too, as we're going through this, this is just the start of this drafting, so there's going to be a lot more opportunities to add comments and feedback, because there will be a draft two and another draft after that.
Yes. Yes. The center's policies we were just looking at were draft three, so.
So, this was discussing the business park policies and focusing on more flexible zoning. So, we currently, there was some discussion last time. We were, I think, we may have misspoken, we talked about the housing permitted in business parks, because they are permitted right now. I think it's manufacturing where it's a conditional use. Or an accessory use.
This answers my question. I just, I wanted to know if it was changing, and it is. Commissioner Parna.
I think this is fine. I'm just curious about whether, when we have these, again, it's coming down to whether we want to remove that housing thing or not. So, what do you think, Chair?
Sorry, what was your?
Right now, housing is supported in the business park, LU 61, but they want to remove it? Do we want to remove it?
I think that the way, the way housing is allowed in business park right now is actually difficult. It's not, having dealt with a parcel that was trying to do housing in a business park, it doesn't really work well. So, I mean, I'm fine with removing it out of the business park.
Sounds good. Then, just a question about LU 37, just a further clarification. In terms of understanding the density, it's not addressed. Is that something will be addressed in a different place?
It'll come later in the, in more of the zoning code, so this is.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, part of the, this process of removing some of those details from the policies and putting them into the code.
You can close this, right, Chair?
Yes.
This is going great. Okay. So, this is the difference between urban rec and open space and parks and open space. I think the use of that open space in there is a little, for both of them, is a little, is slightly confusing, but essentially the difference is the urban rec deals with some more limited and smaller spaces, spaces especially that are close to critical areas that have some sort of limitation on them, where the parks is a little more expansive.
I think this is fine as an explanation, and just, like, is there a follow-up somewhere where we make sure that this is addressed in the next draft? Like, making sure that we don't drop the ball on this kind of thing? So, I don't know. The explanation is fine.
Okay, yeah.
So, it's closed from this issue matrix, but how do we make sure that it goes to the next draft?
So that this explanation gets, or the definition, you want a definition of these two in the, somewhere.
One of the key parts of updating our elements is we do go through all of our stakeholder input, and you betcha your issues matrix will be on there.
Okay, great. So, you can close this then. Thank you.
And I think these are the definitions that are in there right now, but I'll add that kind of clarification, potentially the smaller versus larger. How many semi-rural areas do we have? So, I looked at the existing conditions report, and we do have 92% of land area in Redmond that is considered semi-rural. And if we look at the.
That surprised me quite a bit, actually.
And if we look at the current land use map, we can see sort of where those are. But I'll, I can pull that up in a, in a following matrix.
I had a question for the commissioners. I, I don't know how this works, but should we have a discussion on the fact that our city is moving from a suburban to a more urban, and then we have, you know, the semi-rural? I, I don't know. It feels like too much going on in our little city, suddenly. So, if we are committing to this, does it stay that way? I know we can't do anything about it, but it's more like, should we leave the door open for development there, or something like that? I don't know. Is that not the right place? I don't know whether to ask it here or not, but... I was just curious what people thought.
What is the purpose of the designation? I mean, is this land that is unable to be developed otherwise?
The land use categories basically try and bracket in the type of zones that would occur in that area. So, we're defining the uses, and then the zones will get even more specific on what can and can't go there.
Commissioner Loaeva Camina.
So, then, just for clarification, then, as soon as we give it a semi-rural designation, then that somewhat protects it from being overdeveloped to Commissioner Parna's point?
Correct. The associated regulations and protections would apply.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Weston.
I'm sorry. Yeah, so I was noticing some of the semi-rural near me was actually places that have, like, creeks with deep ravines around them, so they're not really developable. And I'm not sure if that applies to all of them, but it doesn't surprise me that, like, a lot of that western edge of the city, like, when you see those pop up, it's, it's often just because the land is, like, a landslide risk, or a, like, a catchment area.
Jeff points out that LU 40 contains the purpose and allowed uses for the semi-rural designation.
I think we can close this then. Thank you.
Okay, oh, so here's the, the maps. Let me see if I can pull up the proposed maps, too. You want to share? Yeah. That would be great.
Ooh. That is the current land use map. Now, get ready for this. No dramatic ahs or anything. It's so nice. And we went from 13 land use designations to 11 in this preliminary draft, and the real change is the proposed differences to the zoning. It's a little off-track from the zoning element, or the land use element that we're discussing, but just, this used to be nearly 50 zones, and now this is the draft preliminary recommendation. I tried to make a, like, right-now zoning map that could be shared, but there's just so many small zones, it basically just looked like plaid, so it's just... So, those are the maps. Do we have any thoughts or questions?
Pretty. No, this is amazing. Thank you for doing the work. It just clarified so much for me, and I'm ready to close this.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your patience while I negotiate with teams here. All right. I think... Okay. Here we are. How do we address commercial uses and the neighborhood land use policies? So, yeah, we have ongoing conversation on this right now. So, it'll be, it'll be updated in the draft, in the second draft.
Thank you. Thank you. Just wanted to add that 31, 27, and 28, the new numbers, okay? They sort of talk about complete neighborhoods, but they should be made explicit, and that's in conjunction with the commercial, neighborhood commercial piece, so...
What was that again? What's the number again?
Excuse me. 31, 27, and 28. Thank you. And I think we can close this one.
Okay.
I want to back up for just a second to the land use maps, and we heard from Katie, I can't remember her last name now, in the, yeah, in the comments tonight about the CIM site still being in manufacturing. Do we want to discuss that, or is there any plan to? And I've also heard mixed things about whether that, that site is going, is part of the, intended to be part of the, the countywide industrial center. So I've been a little unclear about that.
We can definitely address the, whether it's going to be a part of the countywide when we come back, if we want to address that at that point.
Currently, in the current zoning, it's a, it's a manufacturing park overlay.
Yeah, so I don't think it's included right now in the, in the manual, in the, the proposed countywide industrial center. I will double-check that, but I, as of right now, I don't think it's included.
Okay, but it is currently still manufacturing.
Still manufacturing park.
Yeah. Okay. Huh? Yeah.
So I think where the CIM property, at least we should explore whether it is possible. And as we heard, I think we should kind of add a point about how we could make it conditional in terms of walkability, or they're willing to talk about how to make it work. It's, it's worth exploring, at least, I think. So more, I don't know what, limited or, I don't know what the word is, but limited is probably what it would be, right? I mean, for that particular parcel, so...
I mean, they, they are right that it is not currently manufacturing in any way. It's, that's where, where I go to train, so...
I'll add that in here. Okay, that's something we could address in, in draft two.
Okay.
Forward.
Yeah.
So what are the implications of these? What are the big changes? So the biggest changes we identified are kind of the addition of the complete neighborhoods, the adding those mixed-use designations, that change in zoning and land use, and the additional middle housing. So that expansion of just the single-family zones to allow more variety of housing.
Commissioner Van Neumann, is that, answer your question?
Yeah. Okay. Okay. So this was just kind of clarifying policies in reviewing meetings, so this is something we'll certainly be doing in draft two. If you have any additional policies that should be added to, to review, please let us know. Okay.
Good.
Everybody happy with all this going in draft two?
Yeah, that sounds great to me.
Okay. We can close that one.
So there was some conversation about water and environmental protections in the manufacturing park and business park zones, and yeah, just adding a more clear reference to the, the current CAR regulations.
Thank you. That's close, too.
Okay. And yes, this was, and then number 10 in LU 41 are food trucks included. That is definitely something under consideration for draft two.
I, I actually had a follow-up on that one. It says, "and associated commercial uses." So would that be things like kiosks and stuff, or? It's in LU 41, somewhere in there is a text which says, at the end, it says, "and associated commercial uses." So a little clarity on that would be nice. Like, how far are we willing to go for something like that, right? Thank you.
In case it hasn't been obvious, this commission is very much in favor of food trucks.
No, I think, I think that has been made clear. Staff is in agreement. But yeah.
And if I can just chime in on that one. The, what are we trying to preserve or protect in this policy? I don't know that that needs to be answered now, but I just, I do hope that gets into the second draft with a little bit more specifics on that, because it's, like, right now, it seems very much about specific things, but we're not, there's some, like, category or grouping there that's missing, or context or something. So I just want to make sure that really rises to the forefront.
Okay.
Did you catch that?
I missed the beginning.
Yeah, we missed the beginning of what you said.
Oh, I am so sorry about my microphone. What I was saying is for the, the last part, what are we trying to preserve or protect in this policy? That's really not related to the food trucks at all. It's more just, I feel like this policy is trying to say something, and it's the overarching issue or category or something is not coming through.
Okay.
So that's, that's a draft.
Mm-hmm. Okay, I will definitely take a look at that in, in draft two.
Yeah. But we can, we can close this, right?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, and this is just, we're going to fill in the blanks with the target numbers.
Yeah. That will be in draft two. You're good with, with those going in draft two?
All right.
Yep.
Definitely.
In LU 20, policy language around funding for open space was removed. So yeah, we removed it largely because we're, we didn't necessarily want to address the funding of, for open space and agricultural lands and natural resources, but just that it's funded, not necessarily the source of funding.
Great. Thanks. Second close.
Okay. And we'll take a look at the, the language on affordable commercial for draft two.
Thanks.
LU 34, permit where appropriate adult entertainment facilities. So we were discussing this last two weeks ago, and there was previous discussions of allowing these uses in overlay. And right now, it's, yeah, facilities as a limited use, and then I included the definition that we have in the current, code currently.
Yeah, thank you for the definition. And I'm ready to close these, I just wanted to make sure that we were coherent.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, let's see. Oh, and then this is just addressing the use of the term busing, and then clarifying the language on active transportation, non-motorized. And so I think we're going to move forward with using active transportation. I think that's what was used in the transportation element and what's kind of consistently used in other publications from, from other state agencies and, and across the city.
Okay. I think we can close that one, too.
I think we can close this one, too.
Okay.
All right, I think, I think that's it.
Commissioner Parna?
Additional things? Yeah.
Thank you, Chair. So for the new LU 32, I am wondering if we should consider adding environmental protections like LU 35 has. LU 35 is a mining thing. And LU 32, where we are supporting the industrial and manufacturing growth sector, or business park, or any industrial uses, we do talk about environmental protections in LU 35. I'm wondering if we want to add that for LU 32 as well?
Hmm, let me see.
Is this a way of saying, hey, we're not going to, kind of ruin the environment while we provide this? Something like that, right?
Okay.
And the second one was, I was, I had a question about LU 30. Does the mixed use preclude housing? So I'm trying to scroll up to LU 30 here. Excuse me. Let me take a five.
So that's the new LU 30, the right column?
Yeah, the new one, yes.
Perfect. I'm sorry, what was the question?
Ensure, so I'm just trying to understand if that precludes housing as part of the mixed use. So mixed use areas are located, designed, and developed to maintain high visual quality, locate businesses rather than parking areas. But does that mean that there's no housing, or that, you know, it's cohesive or it's not? I, I, I don't know if you need clarity, but I couldn't figure it out, so...
The designation for the mixed uses typically just express that there are multiple uses there, which is implied to include the residential, and we'll make sure that all of the language in allowed uses does reflect that, reflect that residential is explicitly called out.
Got it.
Thank, thank you for catching that.
So I added those two items to the, to the list.
Okay.
Anything else?
You'd be fine with those going into draft two.
Okay.
Right. Anything else for land use? Okay.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Lauren.
And with that, we will move on to study session on Redmond 2050 housing element and regulations. Ian.
Hello. All right, let me share. So there's a few pieces we should discuss up top. The first is that the change, there will be changes to the housing element that come in your next PC packet, which reflect our discussions here. In addition, the ongoing discussion between developers about the model that was used to inform some of the policy direction, and importantly, the regulatory updates, are still ongoing. We will endeavor to get those conversations substantively underway, if not outright completed, in the next week. So there could be some changes that we will flag for you when your packet is published at the end of next Friday. The public hearing requirement should still stand as long as we're not making substantive, massive changes to the housing element. So if we change things like narrative in the technical appendix or add data, things like that, we'll still be able to move forward. And because of those ongoing discussions about the model, staff recommends that we do not actually go into the regulatory issues tonight, and we let some more analysis happen there. Sound like a plan?
Sounds good.
Perfect. All right. Oh, and also, I want to thank all of the staff that helped put this together, because I was out for almost all of last week with a virus. So thank you to Jeff, Lauren, Becky, the whole team. Oh, I'm alive and thriving. Thank you for asking. And I'm not contagious, that's, yes. Great question. Great question. Issue one, we were talking about homeownership and how much of an emphasis it had in the policies, and so the staff response kind of identified how we're overall trying to fulfill all these imperatives, and also identified some of the other policies where it is explicitly listed.
I think the information provided is very good, because I kind of looked it up and looked at three policies which kind of make it explicit, one which is implicit, and one which is fully supporting advocacy for ownership. So it works great. Personally, my preference would have been for it to be a standalone policy, which says, hey, we are supporting, we want to support homeownership across these various ways, but it's just a matter of organizing things. So it's, it's fine, we can close it. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, okay, so two and three are kind of linked, so I'd like to start with three, which was the question about whether kind of that corporate transition housing would qualify to be under the regulations of the short-term rental. And my analysis is that it would not be. It would not fall under those short-term regulations.
I don't think that was my issue. I, I believe that was my issue. And is that because the, the tenant then is not the, the one in transition to the new position, but rather the, the sponsor?
Correct. The sponsor's holding it, and the short-term rental regulations that are currently on the zoning code are very specific towards components like accessory dwelling units. So if it was just a conventional kind of like subletting or just helping someone move in, it would not fall under those regulations.
It's interesting that we've got subletting. I'm sorry, can you repeat that? Because I don't think that I, I think that was on me. I don't think that I understood what you said about the subleasing.
Oh, no worries. So the conventional subletting, so if, you know, you just wanted to rent me a room in your house for a few months, that is not covered by short-term rentals. The specific short-term rental provisions of our code are generally attached to things that are an explicit typology, like accessory dwelling units.
Okay. But a short-term under that concept, then an Airbnb would be subletting.
And dovetailing perfectly into issue two on the issues matrix is the, in 2021, there was kind of an in-depth staff analysis of kind of reviewing the impact of short-term rentals on the local housing market and possible regulatory approaches to guiding the landscape to more of the goals that were identified in the city's housing action plan and other housing desired outcomes. And the main issue that we came up against is that staff analysis found that while we could make regulations and we could make policies about it, they are essentially impossible to enforce. There's just not enough staff capacity. We'd go out, we'd, we'd try and take care of one, and then like others would pop up. And so that's why in terms of policy, or issue two on the issues matrix, staff would recommend that we take more of a narrative approach, or maybe put something in the technical appendix mentioning this impact. But policy actually trying to limit it might be creating a policy that's essentially unenforceable. What are the commission's thoughts on that approach?
Yeah, I don't think it... Yeah, I don't think it does as much good to have policies that aren't enforceable. My sense, and correct me if this doesn't match with what you discovered when you researched this, my sense is that things like Airbnb have a bigger impact on the ownership market than they do on the rental market. That they, their more condos, they're limiting the middle housing sort of ownership market in Redmond, affecting that more than the rental market per se.
I do not have exact ratio data, but that is generally the trend. The main way that the short-term rentals impact the rental market is that instead of, you know, someone putting their house up for rent, they just instead Airbnb it and just churn through.
Yeah.
I would just add that I don't know that this is the case in Redmond, yet. And that's part of what we were talking about, is that there could be an evolution of this. But in LA, there were people who had qualified for short-
Affordable housing.
Affordable housing, who were turning around and renting it out to tourists. And I don't know if that was through any sort of Airbnb or whatever, but they had a mechanism for renting it out. So it can affect all levels of the market, in theory.
Commissioner Noeva Camina.
Speaking as a renter in downtown Redmond in an apartment for the last six years, I know that in the property that I'm in, there's exclusionary, like it is prohibited to sublease your unit. I spoke with a representative at Equity, who have, I believe, six properties downtown, and they too also have prohibitive language.
Most of the corporate landlords are not going to tolerate that happening. But, you know, a condo building is, you know, is more likely to, people are more likely to buy a condo and Airbnb it. Commissioner Sheffron.
Thank you. A lot of condos, though, have covenants that, you know, don't allow for short-term rentals. Sometimes enforceability, again, can be a challenge, but that's really common for a condo, and the covenants are pretty restrictive. And I think a lot of condo communities have revised these covenants to further, you know, and of course, single-family residential areas that have covenants as well, it's kind of a similar thing, and I can speak from my own neighborhood where it's precluded. And I think the piece that you were talking about is, and perhaps than I'm in too, is it does further reduce the amount of affordable housing.
Commissioner, pardon?
So I think, I think I understand the enforceable issue with, you know, outright bans, but is there something else we can get creative about to not necessarily discourage, but disincentivize short-term rentals? So is it like an added fee, or, I don't know if that's the way to go? Because if they are listed somewhere, and there's a churn.
Some cities have started charging fees, essentially saying, okay, you're a hotel, we're going to charge you like we do hotel. I mean, hotels play, pay, typically pay hotel taxes.
Right. Something along, I don't know if that's the way to go. I know we can't ban outright, and I remember asking this question in 2021, so, but I feel that we need to make sure that it comes down to what Chair said. It's about the ownership piece. Eventually, it comes down to people will buy as investment. Long-term, this at least helps everybody in the city, like, you know, you're bringing in people who are going to live there, work here, and so on, but the short-term, I don't know. So if there's any other way of approaching this, I would love to hear it.
Commissioner Noeva Camina.
Of course, it wouldn't be a great conversation without the other side of the coin. Within the last maybe two months, there's many times where I tried to take the bus as much as possible. And I typically am the person that will chat you up if you sit around me and you're, you know, looking approachable. And I struck up conversations, and the other night, Saturday, I was going over to Seattle, and I was talking to two young women, and they were going to the Taylor Swift concert. They were staying in an Airbnb. I was surprised, because the Airbnb was here in Redmond. And they were talking about what a wonderful time that they have spent getting to know Redmond. They said, I had no idea that a place like this even existed. You've got trails, you've got really clean air, like everything is beautiful, you can even see the mountains from some spots. And they were talking about some of the restaurants that we had in town, and how much they really enjoyed essentially spending their money in Redmond, and how they had an extra day in Seattle, but they were choosing to spend it in Redmond because they've so enjoyed our city. On the way back home that same night, because it was probably about midnight after the Taylor Swift concert, I didn't attend that, but then I was talking to two other young women who were also in town for the Taylor Swift concert. They were visiting from Nuevo León, Mexico, and they too were staying in an Airbnb in Redmond. And I thought, how interesting is this? All of North America is covered and has now gone to the Taylor Swift concert, and rode the 545 back and forth, and are staying in Redmond. And they too were talking about specific restaurants. They really enjoyed their time at Eastside Beer Works, they enjoyed their time at Sages, and they really liked the whiskey selection over at Woodblock. And they were very specific about the thing. So again, we've got folks that are coming in from out of town, staying at an Airbnb that is here in Redmond, and they're spending their money in Redmond. Now, there was another one, but it wasn't nearly as exciting as those two. But they too, it was probably about three to four weeks ago, again, on a bus, but I was going to work in Bellevue. And they were here at an Airbnb, they were here for work, and still in Redmond, and talking about how they're spending their money. So all that to say, yes, I do have concern because of what we've seen in other cities, and what short-term rentals can do. And there's also some pluses to it.
Yep.
That's why I was saying it shouldn't be a ban, it could be something where you're charging for, it's a commercial enterprise, right? I mean, so in that sense, it should be charged, the lodging tax, or whatever the city charges.
I don't think we're going to solve short-term rentals tonight. You know, so, I wish, but, you know, it is a complex problem, but, but yes, Airbnb, like many Silicon Valley startups, has externalized all the costs unto the rest of us. But I think we can move on.
And one of the themes of the rest of the policies is that kind of approach to pursuing housing equity and housing options. So the other policies kind of still allow the city to pursue those options at a later date, at a more actionable level. Also, my laptop went from 11 to 0, so please excuse me while I log back in.
So should we consider this closed, or keep it open?
Well, I would like-
August 9th?
Yeah, I would like to see the Issues Matrix updated with the responses from staff, and reflect the conversation that we had.
Can do. The next item was discussing the special kind of considerations that are necessary for homes with families, with children, specifically the trend of development to mainly focus on studio one and two-bedroom units, rather than housing with more bedrooms. And we identified that policy, H07, does address that without using the phrase "family" directly. And I will turn it over to the commission.
Commissioner Weston?
Yeah, I, my preference would be to make this a little bit stronger and more specific, but I'm very interested in what other people have to say. I think that I don't like the idea of limiting, like, children only to single-family homes. That just feels like it brings a whole host of problems with it, but most families, especially if they have multiple children, can't actually find housing now. And it's an affordability issue, it's an equity issue. So I would like to see that brought forward, but I'm open to hearing what other people have to say.
I tend to agree with Commissioner Weston. This has been identified regularly as an issue that the community has expressed concern about, that we need more housing to accommodate families. So I would, I would suggest maybe adding to H07, you know, provide access to housing for a broad range of household sizes, types, tenures, and incomes, especially housing for families, or especially multi-bedroom housing.
I really like that.
Sorry, I didn't catch what you said.
Oh, sorry, I really like that.
Okay.
I'm sorry, which of the two options did you really like?
I'm adding the emphasis at the end, so keeping this existing language, but adding the emphasis where you're actually calling out either family or multi-bedroom, or something.
Okay.
Commissioner Sheffron?
I just have a comment. So in the real estate world, we are thankfully and finally adhering to the Fair Housing Act. And in that act, we do what we can to avoid even the term "family," so we don't make a reference to "family."
Okay.
Because it's purposefully ambiguous. So whether you find that relevant here, I like the proposed language that you've just suggested.
Yeah. That's why, when I said "family" and then thought "multi-bedroom" would probably be better.
Right, because then we might get into policing, or regulating what is family.
What is family, right. I don't want to, but we've heard consistently, consistently a concern from the community that we need more two-, three-bedroom housing.
Middle housing is one example of many.
Yeah. So.
Understood, we can make that change.
Great.
Issue five is about updating the neighborhood plan terminology, and our response was, or staff response was focused around the phasing of the different updates. Phase one of Redmond 2050, and then phase two, and then after the completion of Redmond 2050, going into the neighborhood plans and making congruent updates there.
Great.
Yeah, we can close.
Bless you. So now we're on to the section about the technical appendix, and this question was about incorporating data on internet accessibility into the technical appendix. I have found data sources that are, they do not provide a count of housing, but they can provide like a percentage of households in a census tract. I can keep looking for things that are more specific, but we, I think we definitely have enough data sources to add something addressing that effect.
Commissioner Weston, this is yours.
Yeah, I think the thing that I, I'm not just sure, can people hear me?
Yep.
Maybe not? Okay, good. I think the thing that I really wanted to call out here is if the ownership properties were all constructed before or certain year, then that's, like, that seems like a really meaty problem to address. Like, if new construction is generally not ownership properties.
Oh, I'm sorry, we were just, I thought we were talking about issue one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, I'm looking at the wrong part of the screen. Yeah, so for that one, it's, I don't know that we necessarily, like, I'm not sure which, like, what the right level of data is worth at with the trucks. Because it's, part of it is whether it was available when it was constructed, but then part of it is whether it's still, like, usable internet at a quality level that's useful.
Staff will keep researching to try and find the data. I just don't want to promise something we can't deliver.
Right. I know this came up a lot during COVID for the schools, that there was some sort of dataset around that, because that's how they determine the funding for providing hotspots to kids. So it's possible there would be an avenue through that.
We will keep at it.
Okay, thank you.
May we close the item with the direction that we'll add it to the technical appendix?
That'd be lovely.
All right, so now we're on to your discussion about the tenure of building age.
Yes.
I misinterpreted the request. I was able to find like tenure rates over time of the city, so we could see how much was ownership, how much was rental. But in terms of what new units are coming online, we could, we could certainly ballpark that, because most of the multifamily units that are coming online, condos don't really get built here, so we could-
Right.
We could make some inferences there.
Now, I, maybe that's not actually useful information, because if we just know that most of the building going, like, recently, and then going forward as we add more density, is mostly rentals, then maybe it doesn't make sense to actually go into the detail. I just sometimes think it can be very stark to have a table.
If I may, I just have a question, and I apologize, because I wasn't here during this original discussion. I'm just curious what the information would be used for.
So from my perspective, I think that I've heard a lot of concern that Redmond does not, like many other cities around us, doesn't have enough opportunity for homeownership. And as we're adding a lot more housing, I think making it very clear that we're not expecting most of that to be like homeownership potential properties. It just, it's, it seems like the sort of data that it's important for the city to track, to me.
Commissioner Noeva Camina.
I agree with you, Commissioner Weston, around, I think that we definitely should be tracking it, because then it's easier for us to track who has more stake in our city.
I'm gonna, I don't like implying that renters have less stake in the city than homeowners.
Exactly my point. Because then if, if the renters aren't welcomed, and we're not making concessions for the renters, and they're more seen or felt as transitional, and not having a sense of belonging in our city, then they're not going to vote. They're not going to vote. And we see the developers in here whenever we're talking about anything that has to do with housing. So that my question of who has stake in our city, perhaps are not residents at all. So I think that it's very important that, as a city, we're tracking these numbers, because then we can benchmark them against other performative numbers, such as registered voters or active voters, to see then, as we surpass 50% renters, which will happen in the very near future, then-
then we can start seeing who actually has the largest stake in our city. And I want to make sure that it maintains the residents' due.
If I can chime in, I also just, in terms of putting emphasis on where you're going to collect opinions and trying to make sure that voices are getting heard and that people are able to provide feedback and they're aware there's even a conversation that they have a voice in. I just... I'm a big fan of pulling together numbers that just paint a story so that people can then figure out how they want to spend their effort. And I think Redmond's doing a really good job on that right now in a lot of ways. But things are going to change a lot as the density increases. And so I just, I'd like those numbers to be or some similar proxy where we're just saying like, are we giving an outsized voice to the people who live here now but not planning for the future?
Commissioner Parna?
I think a lot of good points here. For me, I look at it as renters can be immigrants as well. So we can't really talk about voting. We should just talk about civic participation if we want to talk...
Talk to you.
Sorry. We shouldn't be talking about voting. We should be talking about civic participation if we want to do that. That's one. But from a perspective of the homeownership policies that we want to encourage, these numbers would be good to track, right? I mean, if you have X number of units being built and these are renters and we actually actively really do want people to own properties, you're going to see how many units are coming into the market which are owned versus rent. And that's critical because that's the... That's what we are intending to do, is allow a lot more people to be able to afford to rent and to own. So where that equation lies will only happen if we can track. So that's, I think, what everybody's trying to say. It allows us to see if the policies are working and where we need to put in more effort, right? From an ownership perspective. So, yeah. I don't know if that's making sense, but yeah.
I think a three-pronged approach could kind of get at the goal of what we're trying to track. And that's if we do a citywide tenure tracking. So we say, okay, what was it in 2010, the tenure rate? What is it now or all the years in between? We could also make a reference then against the unit type counts across those years. So it wouldn't precisely be lining up because it'd be sampling data from the census. But the overall trend would still be able to show generally, renting is increasing and the types of housing that coming in is multifamily, which we can then assume or draw a reasonable conclusion from those two data points. Those are mainly rental units themselves. So I think if we do that two-pronged approach of data and then just really strengthen the narrative of it, we can help communicate that. Does that sound like a palatable approach?
That sounds great to me.
Yeah, sounds good.
See you.
Thank you. Okay, and so, closed with integration. The next issue matrix is, in the technical appendix, the census data which showed that zero people live in boats, RVs, or vans in Redmond. That is certainly not accurate in the actual world. I've been trying to find like specific repeatable data that I could use to update this. I was thinking of maybe like trying to pursue point-in-time data and seeing if they had any considerations there across those typologies. But I have not yet. So I will continue to try and find better data. If I'm unable to, I would recommend that I just add qualifying text about that consideration.
Yeah.
Yep, that sounds right. And I'm wondering if there are any of the local charitable organizations that could... Because there are issues with the point-in-time data too. But just point out that we're quite certain that zero is not correct.
Yeah.
Just to avoid that appearance that we think that there isn't homelessness in Redmond.
Understood. Can do.
Yeah, awesome. Thanks, Ian.
And this next item is about the kind of main incentives and workhorses of getting affordable housing built in our community. And of course, the big two are our mandatory inclusionary zoning, affordable housing requirement, and our optional multifamily property tax exemption program, which kind of fits nicely on top of the inclusionary zoning. Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then the rest are the regulations, which we agreed at the start, we're not going to touch tonight. And we will revisit with more review.
Great.
Does anybody have new...
Commissioner Parna?
I had one follow-up question on the AMI, the housing-related regulations. Just a follow-up on one of the matrix issues. So the AMI targeted, I understand the 50% of that is fine. I just had... I was just curious whether consideration has been given to the fact that the AMI probably increases at a different pace than the average salary out there. So the AMI tracks maybe closer to a tech salary, for instance, here locally, right? And if that's increasing at 5% or 8% or whatever, right? Your average barista or the teacher's salary is not tracking that same percentage. So when we put a 50% AMI right now, in five years, maybe that 50% is actually maybe down to 40% or some... I mean, I'm just kind of ballparking it here. But so has something been done to kind of keep tracking that? Because AMI will move with the higher of the salaries.
So from a... That is a very accurate assessment. And there's kind of two considerations for it. The first is the planning perspective, right? So we're saying 50% AMI is the goal. So if we do housing, you know, let's say 2025, it will go for the 50% at that time. When we do the planning for a project at 2040, it's going to be the 50% AMI at that time. So like, Arch annually updates their rent and income limits. So from a planning perspective, it will adjust. The issue will be the actual people on the ground, right? Like, and one of the way... There are approaches to try and minimize that impact, better tenant protections, kind of... There's ongoing discussions about how to calculate the rent increases that can occur. But that, from a planning perspective, it will be considered.
Thank you.
Yeah.
A couple of points. One, AMI is calculated for all of King County, not just Redmond. So that pulls it down a little bit. And it is area median income, not average. So the higher salaries aren't pulling it up quite as hard. But yes, it is still the case that it goes up a lot faster than the bottom of the salary market. Commissioner Van Nijmegen?
So I know we're not going to discuss the...
Regulations.
Analysis, the document from the consultants. But there was one thing in there that I would like them to... You, I know it's not your document, but that absolutely does not make sense to me. It's in the executive summary. They say that there's only 400, approximately 400 units that have been created from the inclusionary zoning. And then the very next sentence says that Redmond has had 600 and some. And then that data, you can see it later in the document where they're... So there's, maybe it's timing. Maybe there's a date issue in their data. They're not comparing apples to apples. But I mean, I can't believe it made it through their screening because it's so... Maybe the data is correct and it's just the dates. But it's super confusing because I read it like three times. There's only been 400 total in the region, but Redmond has had 600.
150%. I will review. Thank you for bringing that to my attention.
Okay. Anything else on housing element? All right. Redmond 2015 monthly update. Jeff, if you want to share anything with us?
Good evening. Good to be with you. The monthly update is pretty short in the memo and here talking because most of what we're doing, you're seeing at this point. So most of it is coming before you. So it really, the report highlights some of the engagement opportunities. The one that I want to highlight especially from that is the Complete Neighborhoods event next Tuesday evening, August 1st at the Redmond Library. And the reason I want to highlight that is it's the first event that we, that is being organized by Eastside For All under the contract they have with the city for equitable inclusive outreach. So they've... They have reached out to a number of community-based organizations. And those community-based organizations will be bringing, will be recruiting people to come to the event on August 1st. So we're really excited to begin establishing those relationships and beginning the work. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that people have about Redmond 2050 they haven't already asked this evening.
Don't say any. You're off the... Ian, do you have any updates for us?
Building off of that, community engagement. Tomorrow, Downtown Park at 5:00 PM through 8:00 PM, we are having Pint with a Planner. No, we're not going to postdoc, but we're going to be downtown having pints of ice cream.
Oh, nice.
It's seven? Oh, that's five to seven?
Oh, my goodness. Correction, that is five to seven, not five to eight. And as another reminder, just, we have a lot of overlay public hearings coming up quick. So we have one on the 9th, the 23rd, and then the 30th. And the housing element and regs are proposed to go for a public hearing also on August 9th. We shared the Preferred Alternative Growth Story Map. That was in the link. I have also emailed it to all the commissioners. It is super fun and a lot of work went into it. I think it's worth a click-through. And then the last piece is that Becky is currently working on implementing equity in Todd as a presentation to the Washington Public Transportation Conference. So just another example of how Becky and Kim are all-stars and are being recognized by external organizations. And that is all the staff updates.
Great, okay. Commissioner updates. You received an email earlier this week with some research I did on corporate landlords and software that they use for setting rents. And I was just curious about what the impact of that was on Redmond. And turns out, it's potentially pretty substantial. There are a lot of corporate landlords who use the software, which tends to push both rents and vacancy rates up. So just thought you might like to know about it. Yes, go ahead.
I had a question then. So is this software used or available also to like private mom-and-pop landlords? Or is it just exclusive to corporate?
I don't know. You can, I didn't look into that. I mean, you can probably look at their webpage. RealPage is the name of the company. They have a website.
That would make it even more substantial, too.
Right. I think they mostly sell to corporate landlords because corporate landlords have a lot more data. They want the data and corporate landlords want the model. So... So I was, I just went and looked at... There are a lot of lawsuits going on about this because there's a question of whether this creates a cartel and violates the Antitrust Act. So I just went and looked at lawsuits that have been filed and looked at the company corporations that had lawsuits filed against them regarding this and looked to see if they had Redmond properties. And turns out, they have quite a few. So just wanted to highlight that because it has an impact on what our assumptions are about how the rental market works. So... If there are any other commissioner updates or anything else, I look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we are adjourned.